Good afternoon. It's about 12:15 on Thursday, November 20th. This is the meeting of the ASC Finance Committee. I'm Board Member Kelly Lessons. And we have some board members online and in the room, but not quite here, but we'll go around. Excuse me.
Hey, you're right, Superintendent.
Alden Thern, the Director of Intermodal for the City.
Meredith Best Harrison from the law.
Jim Anderson, Chief Operating Officer.
Mary Cassell, my Executive Assistant.
No, I'm Mike Lawson.
Larry Morris, Planning and Design.
Aurora Cofreland, Senior Director of Finance.
And online, we have Member Bellman.
Okay, and my understanding is that Member Jacobs is in the building and around the corner. And Member Bellamy is.
He's present.
Present, okay, present, excellent.
With Sabitra.
Okay. Right, excuse me, we have three items on the agenda today. The first is the audit. The second is the monthly update for review from last month. So thank you for allowing the way. So let's start, and then the third is the CIP. So we'll start with the building access controls audit.
Perfect, well, my and I are pleased to be here today. This was an audit that was brought up by the by the district. Something that we really wanted to take a deep dive into. We did do it. We started this when school was still in session prior to the summer. So actually about April and May time period. I know it's been a while. A few things have happened since then have kind of delayed this report. But it's one that's been out there for quite some time. And we did a lot of really good work. Meredith was in direct communication with Jim almost entirely from the day we started to also try to address items as they came up, rather than waiting to the report, which came up several months later. In this process, I will say that my 15 years that I worked here, this was a real priority for me and was really pleased to see it come to fruition at that time. So much so that myself and my wife actually did many of the walkarounds with Meredith that night from a safety protection standpoint. So I've really valued this audit. I hope the board does as well. I think there's a lot of really good things in here that we were able to find. And I'm going to kind of let her go through in detail. And I know the administration has really taken a lot of these things seriously and have a lot of things that they've done since then. So I don't know if they want to wait until the end to be able to talk about all those things or as we go through the findings, they can certainly chime in. But we are pleased to present this. And as you know, it depends on public documents after this.
You know, I would say Alden and I actually talked about it in the barber shop, but that doesn't matter. How do we look at the other priorities in the district and try to come up with a way to audit it? Because P cards are important and all the stuff that we do every year, they are, they're all important. And then we started talking about security and Dr. Bryant and I and several of the chiefs. You know, we can't see what's happening at 96 facilities across the district. And we really felt like we needed a good eyes on the ground look at whether our bill. And it's called building access controls. It's really the security of our staff, students and facilities is what we really are worried about. And so fortunately, you know, we've all known Meredith quite a while now. So we spoke frequently. We did identify some pretty big things we had to fix. And I think this was one of the most important audits in the last few years. So we didn't do well. We're better than we were in May and we'll keep getting better. But it did identify areas, some things were quick fixes that were really systemic problems. So yeah, go ahead.
It's a good audit to start with. So one that they had wanted to do back in 2020 and then pandemic happened. So it kind of halted the actual checking of the security of the buildings. And so this was the first time we got out of schools and see about trying to open doors and things of that nature. I'll get started with introduction.
In our group, we remember Bellamy is online.
Correct. So the Ingraham School District oversees overseas educating nearly 43,000 students and providing climate to 500 staff. Just to give an idea of the number of people that are at the kind of schools and departments at one point in time. According to the district, staff safety is top priority. And by providing a different secure learning and working environment at all schools and buildings. This was something that was really echoed throughout the audit was how important safety is and Dr. Brian's priority with it. So we were excited to be able to help kind of identify areas that needed improvement. To achieve this goal, various support departments, including Office of Emergency Management, Maintenance and Operation and Capital Planning and Construction help manage different aspects of school and department safety. The support assets provide services. Throughout the district of implementing secure vestibules at elementary schools invented your management system to implementing and maintaining lock and key systems to control access to the district's 100 buildings. All buildings have traditional lock and key access with limited access to exterior doors, while some buildings have electronic fog devices which allow fog holders entry through doors where the device readers have been installed. The plan of the district is to implement fog devices at all locations as it does allow easier access to deactivate quickly in case of the loss or theft, in case they're lost or stolen. However, when a key is lost or stolen, risk assessment must be performed to decide if building locks are needed as rekeying building is time consuming and cost of process. In 2023, new security upgrades were approved by voters, which included secured vestibules being installed at elementary schools. The secured vestibules add an extra set of layers to the main doors with the intent to prevent people from being able to enter the school without approval. To enter schools, individual individuals like the buzzer and be allowed in by staff. So the objective of this audit was to determine that if the district was adequately controlling access to their buildings, including review of the policy and procedures to determine if they're being followed. In addition, we visited schools and departments to evaluate building access and review records of keys and fogs issued to contractors. Next is just a boiler statement that we added all of our audit that we think that this audit had it in accordance with generally accepted the running accounting standard. Kind of skip over that piece. I'll go on to the overview about all valuation. I'll briefly touch over this and then I'll go over each finding in more detail. So overall evaluation is the controls over building access need improvement. Specifically, our review found that work orders for building access specific to exterior doors needs review as work orders were not always resolved timely. We also found access to school and departments were not always secure and multiple storage units were not secure after operating hours. Moreover, we found some processes with the key control procedures were not always followed. And finally, the list of fog holders we received from the schools did not always match the list of fog holders we received from the support departments. I'll go over each finding more in detail. If you have questions as they come along, otherwise we can address them at the end. The first finding we had, we put it as most important as it affects specifically elementary schools. The work order process for building access needs review. We found that the work orders for building access specific to exterior doors needs reviews as the workers were not always resolved timely. This appears to be due to several factors, which included multiple work orders for the same request being created, the priority of the work order being set to low or work orders being closed without resolution. For example, one elementary school had repeated work orders input to the front door that was not closing properly, allowing access directly into that elementary school during operating hours. The elementary school reported the door not closing on work orders dated August 24, September 24, October 24, and December 24, and again in January 22. One work order created by the elementary school stated, "Front door not properly latched closed after opening. We understand this is due to construction, however, the problem keeps happening. Close the ticket if you need, we just want a secure building that stays secure." Although the work orders for input for this issue, the door was not repaired by May 2025 and the exterior exterior door evaluation was completed via audit. The school actually thought I was there to repair the door, which I was like, oh, no, sorry.
And it had been a year, almost a year, that this particular school had been requesting to have their front door. And this is when it had a vestibule installed?
Yes.
This was one from a bond practice.
The district's online employee bulletin in August 2022 did include if there are any security or if there are any issues with doors or locks, these immediately submit the work order to maintenance as a safety issue and set their priority as high. However, we found when a secured vestibule is implemented, due to the warranty period, it can cause uncertainty on which support department will oversee the repair. The cost of the security improvements at that elementary school, the cost of the security improvements we visited at the elementary school were estimated to be 2.9 million with the benefit to protect students and staff from existing crime in the area. However, after installation and upgrade, sorry, after installing that great security features, the elementary school is still not secure due to exterior door not closing properly, putting staff and students at risk. We tried to be a little bit more specific in our recommendations and management did a great job being specific in their in their follow up as well. So we asked that the building access should be reviewed regularly and despite the support departments and the schools, just ensure they're working as intended. In addition, the work orders for building and any safety issues should have an automatic high priority thing, kind of keep that low priority from being able to go in and guidance on how to complete the work orders to ensure that they're resolved timely. Management was very responsive in their comments. They let us know that they would, all the work orders for exterior doors, locks and windows or access related, we flag as emergency priority and addressed immediately. Supervisors and leads have been instructed to contact field technicians and work directly, I'm sorry, and redirect work tools, address immediate perimeter security concerns.
Yes, so I can add to this because we've done things since then. So but not the good thing about this, but the best thing for me about this was it identified that that we had overpressure in the secure vestibules that we have been installing over the last couple of years.
Overpressure?
Over. It was so airtight, the seals on the doors were so airtight that there was an overpressure coming from inside the building preventing it. And you couldn't just keep increasing the tension on the mechanism that closes it because someone could get hurt if there was a power outage. This thing would slam shut and of course you don't want that. And and they, so they did find a pretty good fix and they're going through checking them now. And it was just putting one more vent inside the vestibule and then you, the door could close. So that was a good thing to fix. We did go through now everything that says door or exterior security is automatically flagged in the LIMB system where it wasn't previously. So honestly, that's why we do audits, so we can find the things we don't know, especially when it's something systemic like secure vestibules. So it caused us this summer to start looking at all the secure vestibules again because there legitimately was overpressure. If you open and tried to close, it just, it was too airtight.
Pause and just acknowledge that Members Wilson and Higgins have joined in the five to 10 minutes ago ballpark.
So we'll go on to the second finding. And the reason we made that the first finding, usually they're in the listed in most importance. One and two are both very important, but because one affects specifically elementary schools, we wanted to make sure to include that in the first point. The second finding, which is also important, is billing access to schools and departments are not always secure. We visited a total of 30 buildings, which included 26 schools and four departments. I didn't see during the school year, so we had a good chance. And it was kind of a nicer days, sometimes when you maybe it's easier to leave doors open and things like that. But out of the 26 schools, we visited 15 or 58% were not secure due to the exterior doors either being unlocked, ajar, propped open with objects or broken. For example, we visited three high schools. We were able to access all three buildings during operating hours due to side doors being either unlocked, propped open with objects, or left behind. Specifically, one high school had manually unlocked the exterior door with a master key to allow students and staff to freely enter the building, although a fog device reader had already been installed at this entrance to allow staff easier access. At a different high school we visited after operating hours, all the doors to the teachers entrances were unlocked, allowing anyone to walk directly into the building. We also found seven schools that had windows open on the ground level during and after operating hours, allowing access into the building. That also affects heat and things like that. But we also wanted to just point out the safety when it's on the ground level. Out of four departments, one was not secure with the back door bound to jar. The district's access control documents does read, "Lock your doors. We want all students to get inside the school for safety as quickly as possible. So lock your doors once the entry time has lapsed." We also found signs in the doors that do not prop doors open and all staff keys closed door, place closed door behind you fully, fully latch. However, it appears these signs went overlooked. For example, at a high school we visited after operating hours had a rock those propping a gym door open, allowing access directly into the building, although a sign had been placed there at the entrance, "Do not prop open." Although the support department's created documents to assist the building access, it appeared some of the staff, some staff are unaware of the protocols such as keeping doors locked. When we spoke with the school, when we spoke with the middle school, we were informed that a relocatable building we reviewed had been broken into three different times during the school year. And while reviewing the relocatable buildings during operating hours at the same middle school, we found some to be unlocked, no staff or student inside. I did find a computer completely accessible for theft in addition to classroom supplies. Furthermore, we found an instance where after school activities took place in a middle school building. However, when the after school activity was completed, the building was left unsecured. Unsecured access points, schools and departments at risk for safety and theft issues. We did include some pictures in this audit to just give an idea of things that we were finding with the doors propped open, with doors just left the jar. And then also with putting doors that were propped on the next page, just to give an idea of what we were seeing during the audit.
I have a question, recognizing that you probably don't have to answer, but especially with the bigger schools and secondary. I mean, to what extent are students possibly at the root of doors getting propped within?
That's a great, that's a great question. One of the high schools that we did visit, it was a group of students that were doing an art project. And you could definitely tell that the students had like just popped the door open to finish the art project outside. And I had made staff aware and they had gone and kind of taught the students to close the doors. When I left, the door was closed. And so I definitely think there's a lot of factors that could be left into there.
I would say mostly staff.
Okay, yeah. There was one that, one of the high schools I had visited, I got pretty good at being able to tell when doors were ajar and a teacher was walking in, I was like, shh, I just went to my car. And I was like, jotting that down, okay. So I think there's a little bit of everything. And Jim mentioned the pressure with the doors that also, you know, when you have a lot of students coming out and not everyone is checking to make sure it closes behind them, that can also present an issue as well.
So we, we also started, I get an email every morning now on every alarm that goes off across the district, whether doors were open or closed. So we can look for trends, especially schools that have repeated violations. And it includes whether windows were left open. You know, we have two night custodians for all of West. They have 67 doors. If all they did was just check doors, they wouldn't do any cleaning. So so we are using the automated alarm system triggers as well as when the custodian sees something, they can put it in their night report. And I think we have a better ability now to see which schools have the most challenges. You know, a lot of it is well intentioned, staff were well intentioned, but forgot to close windows during the day. And and they just were left open even on the ground floor. So that's why this new report that comes in, I'm able to send it out to senior directors. Office of Emergency Management sends it out, Steve Brown. And we are getting a better handle on it. And now that this audit is official, official, it'll be in front of all the principals during a small group briefing at the next gym leaders meeting. And you know, these kinds of things are never about just the principal. It's about getting it all the way down to every person in the building. And frankly, most of the stuff in the evening was probably, you know, groups and coaches. And it's, it's really got to spread all the way down. But I wasn't pleased that we found so many, but it definitely created the sense of urgency to do, start making changes.
I hope that it also with some of the schools going there, we reminded them of, oh, yes, we do need to have the doors locked there. I think there were some people that were definitely surprised when I showed up to say, hey, I'm here to check the doors. So the management had great responses and they were very, you know, like Jim had said with having, going over the audit with the principals, including this Office of Emergency Management and emphasizing routine doors, dirty checks. Reviewing the secure vestibule upgrades to make sure the air pressure wasn't too much. And the maintenance and capital planning are confirming additional vent, like Jim said, vent within the vestibule, it would be reduced pressure. That was definitely something we saw sometimes with the air would be blowing so hard that someone would have to actually physically close the door behind them.
But this is the one finding that really affects all the areas. Student safety, theft of goods, utility expense and so forth. So just doing, you know, one thing in every building affects many different aspects of safety and the budgeting of that school.
So their finding we'll move on to is the storage units. Storage units were not always secure. We wanted to keep this finding separate because this is more to do with theft than anything. But also does show great importance because we don't have that items stolen. So we found storage units were not always secure after operating hours. These were specific to after school hours that we're looking at. Two of the secured storage units included propane tanks. Two of the unsecured storage units included propane tanks and expensive John Deere tractors that could be accessed and stolen after operating hours due to being unlocked. Although some storage units had additional security, such as fencing to protect the storage supplies, fencing was also left on. During our review, we found, we found locks on the ground, the locks that had been locked to itself, kind of like the locking mechanism, and locks that were missing from the storage unit leaving them unsecured. Some of these storage units were used by after school activities and sports clubs. However, if the storage units were left unsecure immediately after use, there's potential for leading the units unsecured. When we spoke with staff to understand the responsibility of locking the storage units, we were told the storage units were always secure. However, we found gas cans, propane tank, tractors, wood boxes, brand new flooring and field supplies that could easily be taken down due to the storage units being unsecured. Again, we included some pictures in here. We also found an unlocked storage area that provided direct access to a school's generator. So the school looked very responsive. We did have one coach who tracked us down, asking us what we were doing, yozing around the place, which was nice to see. So that was good, but also just reminding them to relock the items right after use. So management departments were again very responsive. And our recommendation was just that, that storage units should be secured immediately after use and a double checking at the end of the day. Management.
And we've added the checklist for the, for those secondary schools that have school security officers. And that's now also on the night, the night check, if an alarm goes off, while they're there, they check all the exterior doors, windows and also the containers. So it's, it's much easier when someone like Kirsten or Sven or Eric Backman can call a principal or me, if it's repeated, call a principal and talk about it than it is for them to get an email a week later. So, you know, it's, it's still happening. It's hard to say, I think we're going to want to do this in about a year. So again, and because it's going to take time to change that culture. But it's something we definitely want to add to this cyclical list of things that we do.
Yeah.
And we wanted to ask this question at the end, but I don't think I can wait any longer. I'm curious. We, from a, from a budgetary standpoint, budgetary process, we cut maintenance at least two years that I can remember recently.
Well, maintenance has been cut a lot.
Sure, yeah, I'm thinking of two cuts that that made me nervous because we try to direct dollars as much as we can to the classroom. And but we know that every, every district position has an impact, direct or indirect, on the classroom. And so I'm wondering if these reductions that have been made over the last decade to maintenance have had any bearing on some of the findings in this audit.
So for everything that gets installed from doors and. So for everything that gets installed from doors and hardware and everything else, there's a preventive maintenance schedule that the manufacturer says to do. Last year, um, I had to approve that we double all of the PMs. So if it was once a year, it's now once every two years. If it was once every six months, it's now once a year. And with the staff that we currently have in some areas, we still can't keep up with double and may have to triple it.
Yeah, and.
But that's, I mean, that's what that's what it means when you.
And I guess my question is, can we meaningfully address the findings in this audit, both ones we've covered and the ones that we haven't yet with our current maintenance?
This one we're augmenting with contract because we can't keep up. And once we knew how big it was, um, we can't keep up with everything security related. So.
But we can't, we were not going to be able to address the findings.
Well, we're using, we're using contract support.
With our current staff, we can't address.
Not with. We're using contract support because we no longer have enough staff to be able to do it without going out for contract.
We're saying the same thing. I'm just being more blunt.
I'm just making sure. I had to explain CEP four times.
I hear you. Our current staff can address the needs of the district, and I think that that's important. The safety, I mean, maintenance isn't, it's not a classroom teacher or paraprofessional or counselor, but it's important clearly. And so.
I don't think we're pretending anymore that, that we're doing it. We're just going out for contract for all of the, um, most important things because we're also cut the major maintenance budget last year by a significant amount, right? So, um, lack funding for quite a few years. So, yeah.
Well, and also budget priorities. And so I, I, I don't know, I, there's no good, uh, part of the rug to tear problem to cover another part, but um, like recognizing that our choices have consequences and bringing it back when we see things like this setting is important. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can make one comment, our community is different now. When I went to school during the seventies. Um, you could leave some doors unlocked and you didn't have to worry about it. Uh, we have a huge homeless population wandering around and doing nefarious things and so forth. In fact, this picture that's on page eleven, right outside this is a shopping cart from Walmart. Or Target, I don't know. I find highly unlikely that cart was brought by anybody from the staff or and so forth there. They, they're, they're living in all different places. They, they're looking for opportunities. You hear about the crime that we have. So some of these things just get, get exposed more often now because there's more people out there that can commit crimes and um, where we may have had some issues in the past, believing things now there is just more accessible to people because we have a larger community that's trying, that's actively looking for things. Um, yeah.
So next finding we'll move on to is going to be more specific to, um, controls of keys and fobs. So this is what keys that are issued to employees and how that process is, um, what the procedures were and how that process is going. This is the next two areas were more of what the last audit on the billing access focused on. And so, um, I think there are improvements, but there's still room for improvement with this section. So the key control procedures, uh, were created to assist schools and departments in dealing, the detailing and the duties or responsibilities to principal and managers. And the employees at the district as they relate to the distribution of keys. The below processes within the key control procedures were not always followed. Key inventory is not always accurate. Schools are supposed to do the inventory in, uh, May and in August. However, it appeared that key inventories were not always accurate. For example, when we visited an alternative school, review the key inventory and comparison list provided by the support department. There were numerous keys at the, at the school location that were not included on the list provided by the support department. Specifically, we found rows of key in the lockbox that were not included on any list. In addition, the school staff was using the key list from twenty fifteen to complete inventory as they were, as they were uncertain on where to obtain that updated inventory list. We see this sometimes with turnover when, uh, maybe one position is training another one, but they're not able to give them the full picture. And that employee, um, they're very nice, but they were adamant that this list from twenty fifteen was the only one that they had. And they could provide me a copy, but they couldn't lose that list. Um, we were able to work with maintenance to provide them a more updated copy, which was just nice, kind of showing, bridging those gaps between the departments. Furthermore, when we're viewing the key inventory, the key markers did not always match when comparing key lists and did not always include names and employees assigned to the key, making it difficult to ensure the key inventory was correct. For example, the support department provided the list of keys for a middle school that included eleven master keys. However, when we reviewed the list by the middle school, it showed more than thirty master keys. Finally, a key inventory list we received from an elementary school did not include all of the keys and instead only included classroom keys, but did not include any master keys or keys assigned to the principal. The key control procedures references seven, several documents that are intended, this is the user key inventory and reporting. However, we found that the documents were not always uniform and instead the instructions, um, instruction on how to complete the inventory vary depending on the document. For example, the key controlled, uh, sorry, the access control documents state to upload inventory to a Google Drive. While the key control procedures references an appendix that requires the keys to be completed on a paper form with no reference to the Google Drive. Due to inconsistent key procedure or due to inconsistent inventory practices, keys that have allegedly been returned to the school went unaccounted for. For example, a key, uh, key lost form for a master key had been, had been reported as stolen. So, sorry, the master key had been reported as, as lost. Uh, although the comments on the form stated that employee had in fact returned the key to school. The description stated the AA was out, the employee, and the employee says she returned the key back in, but it's not here. Without accurate inventory, it's difficult to determine if it had been returned to school. We also found there was no review of the key inventory to ensure the inventory had been completed. I always say this when, um, you do something, but then you never hear back from the person that you submitted to. Sometimes you wonder, is anybody looking at this? Do I need to keep doing this? We also found that lost key process was not always followed. Keys that were marked as lost in this school's inventory list were not always reported on the lost key form. In addition, a master key that was lost in twenty twenty was not reported on the lost key form until twenty twenty four. The key control procedures however state report lost keys on the same day or next business day on the loss of known and to complete the lost key form online. However, when we reached out for the lost key data, the support department listed on the procedures, they asked us to contact the different departments with the data. However, when we contacted that fund, they referred us back to the original document to their request. Lastly, we reported outdated procedures for the lost key form that included instructions. Contact the department that was no longer involved in the lost key process and only in the stolen key process. So just a little bit of outdated procedures and a little bit of trying to remind which department is in charge of the keys and things like that now. The next process within the key control procedures that we found was not always followed was keys loaned to employees. The key control procedure states keys cannot under any circumstance, or sorry, uh, key holders cannot under any circumstance loan keys to an employee. However, a set of keys was lost due to the staff allowing others to borrow them. Specifically, the lost key form stated keys were borrowed by a teacher or parent, a teacher or son, and they were not far back. Many people borrowed them that day, so I don't know who had them last. The key set lost included a master key, employee's fob, front door key and a key box key. We, our recommendations was that the current practice, um, for inventorying keys and reporting lost and stolen keys at, be reviewed to make them more easily understandable and one document. Sometimes we have multiple pieces of paper. It's pretty hard for users to try to follow along on what's supposed to be implemented and done. We also, um, recommended that support departments review the key inventories to ensure that they are accurate and reconciled with Florence Rivers. So if they're, um, reporting, you just write the keys down wrong, helping the schools kind of understand how to complete that process.
Um, I'm just keeping an eye on the time and like maybe we can tie this up really quick so we can have.
Absolutely. The next finding is very short, so I'll go over it.
So for both fobs and keys, uh, we're working on the fob. You'll see when you read it that there was, uh, lists that weren't current at the school. We had IT go in and create a new report. So schools can have updated fob lists as far as the keys at the end of the school year, and we'll start messaging and providing everything to principals. Um, when they do close out at the end of the school year, they'll have every single key brought back in, clean everything up, um, create the log, create a duplicate so we have a tracking mechanism and then correct it moving forward.
Sounds like this is a really thoughtful audit that has led to some smart, necessary, actionable uh, movement, forward movement.
Right.
So I, I appreciate the audit, I appreciate the questions and I appreciate the administrative responses. And it sounds like we're going to do it again.
Yeah.
In, in a, um, many years. So when we talk about, um, next year's priorities, I will, um, or the board will, will work to identify.
What would be the following year? Because the key control will be at the end of the school year.
Okay, all right. Uh, remember Bellamy? Yes.
Yes, thank you for, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, for, maybe for the next or the following board connect, um, if we can get, I'd like to have some, I, I'd like to have a deeper understanding of, um, the, the impact of the budget.
Hmm.
We've got to be able, because these are some serious findings and I just need to, I think that needs to be, uh, in our top of mind when we go into our budget discussions. And then the other, um, requests would be just an overview of what kind of training and communication strategies we might be implementing. Uh, to do, like you said, Jim, you said to, and I like that, change the culture uh, around security and safety in our buildings. Um, I mean, I think as a community, we're having to think about our own safety and our own security a little differently. And so I'm not surprised that, uh, when it comes to, um, managing our buildings, uh, we've just got, we, we've got a height. We've got to find a way to just make sure that who, that we can be responsible for our safety as well. So training for staff, how, what kind of communication strategies might there be? And, uh, can, can somebody, Jim, can you just briefly, or, and you can put it in a board connect? The difference between, I think I understand it, a maintenance product, uh, project and, and a capital improvement project. I know the capital improvement ones are usually the big, big, like the whole, and the safety vestabules, that would be a capital improvement, but fix it.
I can explain it in word connect.
Okay, that would be great. Cause I know we're running out of time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, okay. Thank you so much for a really thoughtful audit. They're always comprehensive and it's just great to know that important conversations are happening quickly. Uh, before they necessarily get to this, you know, why delay? Um, so, so thanks to everyone involved. Um, the second item on the agenda is a long awaited actor. Um, so we'll pivot to that. And I assume that there is slide deck or a link to the document.
I have a book.
And so just board members in your box right behind President Jacobs here in the conference room, you can get your own copy of, uh, the act for. And for community members, it should be housed online. And as well as attached to the webinar.
All right, um, I guess. First, did you want to, how much time did you want us to leave for the CID?
Um, at least five minutes. Um, but yeah, I mean, I'm, I think we could go over an extra five minutes if that's okay. I think communication starts at one thirty. Maybe we can take an extra five minutes. So let's try to end by one ten.
Right. We can do this. Uh, so we'll go through fairly quickly. We did, uh, finish up our annual comprehensive financial report. Thank you to Aurora here. Um, for those of you that are unaware of the document or haven't looked at it very much, it's broken down into uh, a few different sections. Our introductory section is really some informational stuff where we transmitted our organizational chart. Um, which is what the school board is. We get into the financial section will show the independent auditors report. So we did receive an unmodified audit that is good. Uh, meaning no significant findings that they need to address. Um, there's management discussion analysis that is really probably small, so we blow it up. Um, but really just kind of details how the management is viewed, why these, why the finances aren't the way they are. Uh, we will get into a little of the basic financial statements. We'll actually start going to these sections and look through them. Um, explain some of the differences between our government wide presentation of expenditures and revenues versus our governmental funds, which are also listed out in separate sections by fund. Um, but then it has all the different schedules. So just kind of jump into it and I do want to lay behind for questions if you've got them. So I'm gonna start by scrolling down to um, basic financial statements. So this is our um, district wide look at our financial statement net position, really, you know, your, your balance sheet. Um, and with the.
I have a question.
Okay.
So we're talking FY twenty five. So this is as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So effectively it's already out of T. I mean,
I mean, you can put it that way, yes.
But, but we're talking about last year and so the members may not necessarily represent.
Yeah, this is what actually happened. Most of the stuff we deal with in the finance of the board is what, not even where we are. It's like looking forward, like what are we going to do now?
Yeah.
So then we come back and say, well, here's what actually happens.
Okay.
So this is what actually happened. This is all the audited, but, um, compliance documents we have to do. Um, we ended with about two billion dollars in assets. Uh, by and large, that is, uh, depreciate or, uh, land and, and lease. Um, some cash right to use assets. This presentation is our full accrual fund, so it's going to have things like our pension obligations. So the unfunded pension obligations from the state are included here. So you'll see it in like, uh, non-current liabilities. There is, um, oh, what's it called here? The net pension liability of four hundred and three million dollars. Um, that's one of the big ones, but that's something we include in our full accrual fund versus our fund statements, like just saying, here's our general fund. Otherwise you wouldn't get a real kind of picture of our current resources. So this is really, you know, if the state were to fail to maintain its obligations to our, our pensioners, then this is the amount that the state says we would owe. Um, overall, ended up with about nine hundred and fifty five million dollars in net position. Almost all of that is tied up into our reserve for capital assets. So that's our, again, our land, building, equipment, things that don't really have enough, uh, liquidable value. Uh, so any questions on this, this one in particular? Um, this one's got a lot more. Oh, one new thing we have in here is the accrued compensated absences. Um, you'll see it's a say are pretty similar to what it is was last year. But if you look at the FY twenty four financial statements, it's going to be considerably less. There was a new statement from Gatsby that came out, Gatsby statement one on one that required us to book, uh, sick leave that doesn't have a cash value. So if it's more likely to not to be used, um, then we have to report it as a liability on our government wide statements. So that added, you know, thirty five million dollars or so. Um, in total. So it's separated into two, uh, two, two sections. One is due within one year and one is kind of the, the full amount. Um, so that is something new for this year that we've added those liabilities. Uh, but that was the only significant we changed we made in our presentation, I believe.
You gave us a head that, that, that a few minutes ago.
Yeah, yeah. But it doesn't really affect our expendable resources necessarily in our different funds. Um, so as far as the full accrual goes on our expenditures, well, you see there's changes in the, like the pension obligations or the increase in, um, or changes in the compensated absences that wouldn't necessarily get recorded on any of the other funds, they're recorded here. So as we say, okay, the pension obligation goes up by a hundred billion or down by a hundred billion, you would see that as a change in expense in here. Um, and again, it shows about you know, thirty two million dollar net position loss from the prior year. Uh, most of that's as a result of just spending down current resources through our general fund and toward it too. So any questions on the full accrual? That one's a little, that one takes a little more time to wrap your head around than the other one. That one's, there's a lot that goes into that. We could probably spend a few days going through it if you really wanted, but, um, probably firing. So exhibit three will show by the fund level. So here's our balance sheet by the fund level. So this is where kind of all aggregates up. Um, and then there is a. Um, and then there is a uh another schedule that shows the crosswalk between this schedule and how you get to that full accrual. And that's the one after this, but um we'll go through the funds individually really quickly, so just to note that this is here. The next schedule, as you can see, here's all the differences, so it takes the governmental fund balances from the previous schedule up here. And then crosswalks the differences that aren't included, that are included in Exhibit One, but not in Exhibit Three, is really what this does. So it details out all the long-term liabilities we have, uh, all the amortization and things like that. Exhibit Five is the similar look, except it's the income statement or statement of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. For all the different governmental funds, so this is really our expendable resources in each fund, uh, but how we or how we spend them. So, one thing to highlight here, the general fund, we'll get to it, you know, we talked about all the clues, about thirty-two million on the government-wide. Thirty million of this is on our governmental funds, um, primarily as a result of our planned usage of fund balance of about thirty-seven million. So while we planned to use about thirty-seven in fund balance, we only spent about thirty, so. Better than lead uh plan whenever originally built the budget, but still, our resources are going down. Uh, but then this statement, Exhibit Six, crosswalks that previous one of our revenue expenditures at the fund level. To that government-wide look on Exhibit Two. All right. That, try to get to the, there's lots and lots of notes in here about what goes into our capital assets, our health plan, or our um. The state's retirement plans, our long-term debt, there's some whole wealth information in here. Uh, but kind of want to get to the things that you guys will need. As from a management perspective, or governments would want to know.
I think an important thing on page forty-three is where it talks about the transfer in and outs. So that's from one fund to another, and then that note on there will explain exactly what we've done in one.
And there's another on those forty-three, so.
Yes.
To get service, capital projects. Sort of that bottom.
Yeah.
Here, that there.
Uh, draw your attention to the page before that as well. This is, you know, you probably get asked a lot as board members, like, you know, here's your fund balance, how are you spending that, or why do you have this fund balance? This schedule really details out what those funds, all those funds, and what they're reserved for. Um, you know, you see in the general fund, we have a hundred and sixty-four million dollars of fund balance. Thirteen of that at the bottom, that's really our unassigned amount, that's what's truly flexible spending. Uh, the forty-nine million, you'll see forty-nine point eight in subsequent years expenditures, that's what we're currently allocated to spend down in this fiscal year.
So the thirteen point two that I see here on on page forty-two, and that I've seen elsewhere, it's sort of the same figure. That is what is remaining after in our, as unassigned. In fund balance. For potential use in FY twenty-seven.
Correct, all things being equal, I mean, we'd have to figure out, you know, where we're in this year, after we have lots of enrollment changes. Well, no, I mean.
Okay.
In concept, we would spend down this fifty-eight or forty-nine million, and we'll.
So.
Leave that four thirteen alone.
So the sub, we could, because this is an FY twenty-five audit, we are in FY twenty-six, we're using forty-nine million in FY twenty-six. Which is technically subsequent.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, that's that authorization of my balance for this year.
Right, so when we, we talked about overriding board policy. To an unhealthy and unsustainable level, we've spent every penny we can to down to five percent, and that's this forty-nine million. Yeah.
Is there a, is there a better way to fund balance? To to the most spoken community applies that it's money sitting with without a purpose, and. I'm trying to figure out how we, and maybe we can't, maybe we've gone, we've done as much as we can to communicate that. Fund balance doesn't mean the money isn't already going somewhere. And so is there, i- is there a way to describe? Is there a better way we could be saying it?
Yeah, I mean, this is essentially the description of here's where that money is reserved for.
Right, but I mean, but we are, I mean, aside from member lessons, yeah, that we're not bringing out a page from an acter in a meeting. Only Kelly's gonna do that, which I appreciate, but I'm not gonna do that, so is there, is there a way to describe? The term fund balance almost seems disingenuous, when it it's not a balance, those ninety percent of those dollars are going somewhere, like it's. It's really thirteen million.
Um, to some extent, I mean, we have like the, like self-insurance, we have twenty-two million sitting out there for the potential of claims to happen.
And it would be irresponsible to have that be zero, and so I I consider that allocated.
Yeah.
We have to have that, unless we're gonna go pay a broker, right, so.
Well, and so you still have to reserve the funds to.
To pay the rent, it would be a different expense somewhere else, and so. Uh, maybe there's not a better term, um, it just seems that the term fund balance just is.
And we're really prescribed in how we do this by the governmental accounting standards board, so we can't call it anything else without getting a binding in our office.
So, going, going, thank you, um. Can you help, and maybe I'm asking some prognostication for the future, but of that thirteen point two million dollars. Which I see here on on the bottom of the sheet. To what extent is all of that available, or um is it limited, because we need to protect the municipalities on reading?
That's that municipal bond rating is pulled out.
Already pulled out.
This is all, I mean, this really is what is spendable at this point.
Okay, and is that within our V percent?
Um, it would probably be in the seven percent range, maybe, in total, because it's gonna be the. Well, it'd be, it's about two percent of our expenditures, so we have about five percent or so of the warrant best wrapped up in our bond rating.
Okay.
So we talk about the state's chart, you know, the government considers this twenty-six million for bond rating restricted. Like, we can't spend it. The state says, nah, it's not, you can, you guys can spend it, because they don't have any mechanism in their. On their reporting to strip that out and say it's something that it's authorized to be able to, and. As unreserved on their calculations. And Anchorage is the only one that has that bond rating reserved, so they didn't carve out a special thing for us, I guess, years ago when they. Developed the statute. Uh, should be noted that the state's policy for unreserved fund balance versus reserved. Fund balance is different than the G- Gatsby standards. The Gatsby standards changed, well, a decade ago at least, uh, and the state hasn't updated theirs, so. There is a page, and we'll scroll that since we're kind of top of mind in the back of the thing. So there's this page that kind of provides a crosswalk between what's required in the Gatsby versus what's. The state of Alaska is. So, Gatsby says anything that is either. Unrestricted, assigned, or committed, that is considered for unassigned. Unassigned, signed, or committed is all uh unrestricted for the Gatsby rules. Anything that's non-spendable or restricted is instead of restricted. Um, so that's why you see like on the bond rating here, you have it under the Gatsby standards as a restriction. But on the state of charter accounts, we don't. Uh, but there's other categories too, like the, you know, the self-insurance or something is. Reserved under state policy, but not under Gatsby, it's technically an assignment, so technically spendable. Um, so there's just a lot that goes into it, we did in the year at thirteen. Thirteen point four percent was our uh, was our state calculation. Um, but that also includes a nearly fifty billion dollars we're gonna spend down. So that's how that's broken down, and it's really just compare it, uh, for those of you listening, it's the unreserved portion divided into the total expenditures, so. Eighty-nine divided six sixty-nine is the thirteen point four, is how they get to that percentage. So it is ten after.
Who's ten after?
Goes by really quick, there's a lot of information in here.
There is, and I, I mean, I find it a really helpful document, there are some charts towards the back that you understand P T R over the past decade. Um, data on our teachers, you can look at our charter schools fund balances, so I think this is such an important and timely document.
Yes, the technical section at the back has uh a wealth of information for the last ten years.
Right.
But if you have time, peruse that, and it answered a whole lot of questions with respect to. Like, uh, how much bond debt we had, or what our enrollment was, what our fund balances were over time, so. Lot of information in there. Uh, it is a fairly dry read, so kind of chunk it up at that time.
Uh, I think, I think insults were just hurled, um. But uh, but there's um. There's a lot of good information here, I've also heard that budgets are love letters, does that, that makes you feel better? How actors are. Um, okay, well, thank you, um, I will just alert that we can always direct questions to our finance team. Um, and and I may do so, I've sort of pulled a couple of pages that time is short.
Yeah, depending on what's more time, I'm happy to come in and meet with us and walk through it more. It's a lot easier to do it on paper through the book than it is on the PDF through there.
Um, I appreciate, again, kind of wrapping that up, uh, that we received an unmodified audit. At the, at the start of this conversation, so um, it's good to know that our finances are good things. Um, okay, with that, um, let's pivot to the C I P, was the third item on our agenda, and if um. Folks can stay an extra five minutes, maybe we can approach a little bit on the window between finance and communications.
So, um. First, wanted to see if there were any questions from the C I P brief we gave, the, um, everyone knows the bond passed in the consent. Um, portion on Tuesday night, so the next step is the C I P and discussions on that. We did get questions uh from Carl about, do we have three or more roofs per year? And because of the size of some of these, that we're doing, the answer's yes. Um, the one thing we haven't discussed, I've talked about it, um. On the one-on-one bond briefings. Is, is, you know, it's gonna come up during the approval of the C I P, is what. Does the board have for guidance? Since Lakota's didn't close, is the plan, and this is a committee of three people right now. But it's gonna have to be discussed as to, um, what is the board's intentions, we have not always provided buildings. To charter schools, so there's always that as a possibility. You know, just to make sure everyone understands the timeline, it, they don't have to be out of there by the end of next school year. They have to be out of there by the end of the school year, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or. We have to have a fire suppression system in before the start of twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or an extended waiver. Um, one new thing that I, that we didn't have a week or so ago when we talked about the bond. Is that we did finally receive a little over one point eight million from FEMA. Um, of the ten million that we're expecting to receive, so we know that money will keep trickling in. It, if Abbott Loop is going to continue for a period of time in use. Um, it does not necessarily mean we would have to put it on a bond. Um, if we were to do some repair to give it some extended life. But like many of our old buildings. If, if it were to be looked at as a strategic long-term use, it would need significantly more. Than that, it doesn't have a secure vestibule, it will need a new roof at some point, it needs boilers, it. It needs a lot of work, it's an old building. So I don't know if we wait until it's the whole board and and we talk about this, but but it certainly. Needs to be discussed, because I don't know which way to go.
Yeah, yeah.
I I guess I want to clarify a couple of things, one, the C I P is, and can be, a living, a living document.
Absolutely, yeah.
Can be amended, aside from the annual submission.
Every year.
And it's also not binding, because of that, okay. Want to clarify that, the the second thing I think I understand is that Abbott Loop. Um, could continue to operate as it is with this, its regular budget for maintenance and operations. Without any additional investment.
Through twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Right, okay. Um, and and, yeah, the last thing I think I understand is we have not even attempted to, which for understandable reasons, I'm not saying we should have. But we have not yet attempted to contact the state fire marshal and ask for an extension on the deadline.
I have not, um, I mean, it was just Tuesday night that we turned out.
I'm not saying we should have, I just want to make sure that we haven't had conversations yet.
Since the city fire marshal, it's Brian Dean, um, obviously, I'm going to end up talking to him over the next few weeks.
Right.
Uh, but, but no, I I haven't yet.
Do we have any reason to believe, um, the city fire marshal would be a firm and automatic no on a modest extension?
I think if there was a clear-cut plan with a timeline. For either them relocating to a new facility.
Right.
Or repairing the current facility and putting in a fire suppression system, he's pretty reasonable. And and honestly, the municipality is easy to work with.
Yeah.
If we say we might have a plan, then he's not gonna be as easy to work for, because.
Right. I, so I guess i- in terms of a proposal, I've been thinking a little bit about.
And I don't think we would even ask yet, I think we would ask a year or so from now about extending a waiver.
Understood.
So we have time and space.
I I I I think that Rokashul might feel better with that extension in place, sooner than later. Um, they also might feel better if the board provided some sort of guidance and plan, and uh. The only guidance we've provided thus far is we're really uncomfortable reducing the number of elementary schools we use. Um, and that's just through our votes, not through our words. And so I I guess I'm personally comfortable, and what I think I will pursue with the C I P. If there's an attempt to invest funding in Abbott Loop through a school bond, is to place that. Further towards the end of the C I P, and as a backstop. Um, recognizing that our rightsizing conversations are not over, uh, but in my opinion, will not re um. Occur until. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and so I think having a, having a Abbott Loop elementary building. Investments in twenty-nine or thirty. Is my preference with the um. The other preference I would have is to address that need through rightsizing versus um addressing a. Deaddressing structural needs in a building, when we have previously decided it's excess and have a one point five billion? Dollar to prevent this backlog?
One point five, uh, actually, a little bit more.
Perfect, yeah, so I don't think we want to add more to the list, I don't think we have that capacity, I don't think Anchorage taxpayers, even with S B D R. State bond debt reimbursement have that capacity in their wallet.
It will be difficult to justify. A waiver to twenty-nine, thirty. Knowing that, because he also knows that. One, we're also gonna have to throw more money into this building before that, the boilers are ending, end of life. Um, when, when both boilers go out, it it would be a. It would be a problem in the middle.
Well, I, and I would support that case, holding that one point five million from FEMA to repair the boilers when they finally go. Or when they're close to that point, I I guess.
Oh, they're close, I I, I think we would want to go ahead and, and uh, because you gotta order them, they gotta come in, you've gotta get a contract.
So if, if, I I guess a clarified question, if if we want to continue using Abbott Loop for the next school year, we need to replace the boiler?
Yes, and then we need to do a deep dive into what else really should we replace. Now, can they maybe make it another year? I I guess, I mean, w- we knew Klax was end of life two years ago, and in the middle of, middle of the year, they both went out. We got one of them back up again, we ordered a new one, swapped it out, kept the other one limping, ordered the second one, but. We know when it is getting close to end of life, what we don't know is the day, and the week, and month that it's actually gonna die.
Of course.
Um, if we can keep one of them limping while we order and repair, replace one of them, we can do it like that, we've done it all over the district like that.
Yeah.
Um, but I feel fairly confident we're gonna spend half a million dollars sometime in the next twelve months. Just allowing heat in in a few electrical upgrades.
So I'm only speaking for myself, I personally am comfortable with, because the board hasn't provided us another option. On expending that money, I I, because we're going to spend five hundred thousand dollars, I'm less comfortable with saying, well, we might as well spend four point five million. I'm less comfortable with saying, well, we might as well spend four point five million, or five million, or ten million, or twenty million. We don't have the money to attack our deferred maintenance backlog already, I, I can't fathom increasing it further. I, I can't, that, it's, it, it, the fiscal, fiscal justification for it, um, is something I can't even begin to approach.
I agree, I think it'll be difficult to get a waiver putting in a document twenty-nine, thirty. When, prior to the year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, so we're asking for a waiver not having a.
We're, we're, I, my, my proposal with the city fire marshal would be, we have a backstop of at, at twenty-nine, thirty, um. Putting it on a bond, and then in between now and then, we know as a district, we're gonna have to continue talking about school consolidation.
I'll start working with them. If, if the board feels that's, I mean, it doesn't harm, it didn't cost anything to work with them.
I, I, I just, I, I don't see another path forward unless we really want to balloon our. And, and if we, if we choose, and if we choose to invest twenty million dollars in Abbott Loop Elementary. That means a, a leaky roof isn't going to get addressed somewhere else, and then that spirals into additional maintenance that's required, I, I can't get there. In terms of it being a sound fiscal investment. And so, a, a backstop of a bond in twenty-thirty, mostly for the fire marshal's comfortability, like, we're gonna bond for this, and we can use the CIP for that. Coupled with the fact that we recognize we're gonna have to talk about rightsizing, in my opinion, just not next year. Um, I think that would make him comfortable, but it's been a while since I've talked to a fire marshal.
Yeah, I'll talk to him.
Okay, then if you ask for feedback.
Well, actually, that's what I needed, I need feedback, because otherwise, I, I have no idea going in. What anyone thinks about.
Always happy to tell you what I think, Jim, I just can't promise you're gonna like it.
Uh, we, the other option is to recognize that we have three months until we have to pass a balanced budget. And that in order to support students, optimally, there may need to be. A rightsizing plan two point O, which is another conversation.
Yeah.
Um, but could generate a separate facility.
And I, I recognize that there's, there may be some support on the board for, um. Attempting to identify and close schools for next school year in December, I'm not waiting on that at this point, because I, I think it's premature. But what I will say is I'm not confident that a majority of the board supports it, so I'm waiting until we get to that point to have that discussion. I appreciate this out-of-the-box thinking, because we don't have any other options.
You know, I, I know how much effort it is, I know that I'm out for the bulk of December, because my youngest daughter graduates. Nursing school, followed by spending the holiday break with my grandchildren, and frankly. There's no chance you could come up with a plan where you would have all the information to be able to brief it in three and a half weeks in January.
Good to know.
It takes, it takes way more effort than you think to be able to do. I mean, what you didn't see was all the behind-the-scenes stuff, there may have only been two schools on that list, that was not where we started. And, and it's not gonna be that way, if we look at a district-wide, frankly, we had that exact same discussion on Eagle River Elementary. The difference between their non-special program and their gen ed side. And everything you said about what we should have been looking at, we talked about. It just. At the end of the day, didn't, wasn't strong enough. So, in three and a half weeks, you, you cannot produce a professional product. It's not possible.
And I'm sure, I apologize for getting this done as rapid, I just want to find a little bit of time.
Okay, we are over time, um.
Uh, yeah, dropping back to boilers for a moment, I just wanted to ask Jim if there's a significant cost difference between. Proactively replacing a boiler versus ordering one mid-year when, when boats have failed.
No, you know what we're actually looking at is, uh, trying to create our own mobile boiler. Um, out of some of the funding that's coming in, build it on to like a Dynapack for a engine of, because they're motorheads. Um, where you can have a boiler, they actually have them on the market, they don't have one for, that will work for our school, Cornerstone has one. Wrong kind of liquid, so it doesn't work.
Maybe throw a few teachers on there as well.
Well, if we can build something like that this summer, then we will always have a backup boiler that you literally can pull up to the back of a school. Run a line in and heat the building in emergencies. Um, so we're working on the engineering of that right now.
That sounds like a, a great idea for us.
Um, recognizing, um, really quick, Pat, uh, Member Higgins, we are out of time. And you've frozen, okay, Pat, feel free to, oh, Member Higgins, feel free to send your. Uh, yes, quickly.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I, I, I just wanted to comment on a couple.
Member Higgins, if you want to turn off your camera.
Can you, can you email your. Member Higgins, unfortunately, we cannot hear you, and we are ten minutes over and comms starts momentarily, so. You could submit your question, um, to the superintendent. Thank you, everyone, for your participation, um, we will see you next month.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold back.
Thank you.
For anyone who knows the song, rock me on the dais. That's what I did.
Can we agree to, um, uh, start comms at like one thirty-five?
Okay.
Give folks a, a chance to.
Yeah, on the break, yeah, on the breaks, yes. All right, because we. Sorry.
So you're good with that one, very fun, comms always finishes early, isn't it? Yeah, of course.